Introduce our board chair, Maureen Loughlin, who is going to introduce someone who I think you all know pretty well. But Mo would like to formally introduce Fred and has a brief announcement.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'm your board chair, Maureen Loughlin. And before we start, I just want to let everybody know that on October 5th, the board voted unanimously to remove the interim and make Dr. Nedzic your CEO.
I didn't know that announcement was coming. And I told Mo that if I went to my grave and was always just interim, that was okay. But I really, this tour of duty will be one of the great honors of my professional life. And I am so grateful for the confidence and trust that the board has put in me and that you all have had in me. So thank you all. Brilliant. So onto this event. You know, we've done, I've done thirty or forty forums and it's a box of chocolates. You never know who's going to show up. I always ask Ron, what do you think the turnout will be? And we should start wagering on it. And we've broken fire code a few times, packed rooms. And then I showed up at Holly Hall in Bristol and we had thirty. I showed up here one Friday morning and there was one person. A lovely person from coding and we sat for thirty minutes and chit-chatted. And it was great. But you know, when you get down to three or four people, you know you've got the message out and you can cease and desist and move on to something new. But you know, the power of this kind of meeting is directly proportional to how many people show up. And so, thank you all. It's a much, much better event when you've got people here to talk with. So I have things to say and you can stop me anytime and ask questions. And I have probably twenty minutes of stuff to talk about. And then we can have the rest for Q and A. And as soon as we can get out of here and get our work done and go home, I feel like today, that's what we should be doing. So, the board met on Wednesday night, October 5th, in this room. And they voted unanimously, and I would say with some excitement, to sign a non-binding letter of intent with the University of Vermont Health Network. So let me tell you what that means. It is a non-binding letter of intent. In other words, it's non-binding. You know, so either side can get out of this thing at any point for any reason. With that said, I should qualify it with, it's a serious document. It's not a non-binding tweet. It's a legal document with where our affiliates and sports in it. And you know, it's a serious document. So it's non-binding, we can get out of it. But it's a real, it's a real step, it's a real commitment. And then it's a letter of intent. And the intent is to dig deeper. So we've been talking with University of Vermont Health Network since I started in April. Specifically, a group of us have been meeting every single week to talk about this issue. And some of the conversations have been internal. A lot of them have been external, dealing with University of Vermont Health Network. And we've been talking about what would it look like if we worked together and become partners? And what would they get? What would we get? What would they need to give? What would we need to give? Are we better together? Are we better separate? And despite all that conversation, nothing's official. But we've really vetted this thing. As part of our presentation Wednesday night, there were some PowerPoints. And it took two slides to show all the forums and meetings we've had on this topic. I mean, it's really been extensively, been very thorough and methodical and taken our time. And it's clear to both sides that there's some real logic and some real potential gains for all of us to take it to the next step. You know, I think the second thing I want to talk about is why, why are we doing this? And you know, just to take this to its roots, every decision we make is driven by what's best for our organization and what's best for the patients we serve. All of our decisions, what's best for our organization, what's best for the patients we serve. So that has been a guiding principle in how we've looked at this issue. To get more specific, you know, we want access. And actually, who really wants the access is our community. And when we've gone after the community and said, what is important to you? We thought we knew what was important. Maybe it was quality, maybe it was integration. What they've really said is access. And when you push them on, what do you mean by access? It's pretty simple. Number one, make sure there's a doctor in the office to care for me. Number two, make darn sure there's a hospital at the end of South Street to care for me when I'm sick or injured. And we've heard that loud and clear. Sometimes it comes out as make sure there's a doctor in a hospital. Sometimes it comes across as please don't screw it up. Get it right, keep the services that we have here now that we value, keep them here in our community. So as we've looked at this, whether we should be independent or whether we should affiliate, we've made that a guiding principle. We have to be here. We have to be here of our community, that's who we serve, and we're committed to that. So you know, there is no certain future. Independence is uncertain. Partnering is uncertain. There is no certainty. But we've come to the conclusion that it's more secure, safer, better for this organization and the community that we serve to look hard at this opportunity and consider more strongly the possibility of partnering with UVM. You know, secondly, we really want an integrated system. And again, as a clinical person, this is really important to me. If you talk to our patients, it's very important to them in the forums I've done. When I talk about this, every time someone will raise their hand and say, I had great care at Porter. And then I had to go to UVM and I got great care there. But the right hand's not talking to the left hand. The people of Porter don't know what they did for me at UVM. The people at UVM don't know what they did for me at the Porter. We need to address that. And this is the way to do it. Single electronic medical record, Epic, state-of-the-art, best-in-breed electronic medical platform. Not perfect, but being used at most of the big academic medical centers in the United States now. We need to move to that, have one platform, communicate, care for our patients in an integrated fashion. Quality. We all want a quality service. We already have quality. We think we can keep the quality as good partnering with UVM. And we think there's opportunities to improve our quality. They do things called service lines up there where they establish best practices for cardiology, for orthopedics. And they implement those service lines throughout their system. Consistent standards, consistent approaches to clinical problems. They have, we have three people in our quality department, three powerhouses in our quality department. But that's still three. You know, they've got thirty or forty or fifty more advanced software. We can access all these services and move it forward in terms of quality. And lastly, it's the financials. You know, we've modeled this financially. Again, there's no perfectly certain path forward. But certainly, we're hoping that being part of a bigger system will give us a bit more stability, make our pockets a little bit deeper, provide us a bit more cushion, and let us stop spending as much time as we do for separating over our finances day to day, month to month, year to year, and focus on things I just talked about. Access, integration, quality, the things that our patients and community really care about. So again, where we have been, we spent the last six months talking and coming up with a framework of the issues we want to dive deeper into. And those are in front of you. I'm going to talk about those more specifically in a few minutes. And I want to talk about the road forward a bit. So the non-binding letter of intent changes us from an informal conversation into a more formal conversation that is called due diligence. So until further notice, we will be doing due diligence. And specifically, we will be digging deeper into these issues and trying to come up with a bigger document that will be called a definitive agreement. We think due diligence will take about six months. And we think that based on what our consultants have told us, UVM's health network's experience and other organizations' experience. It could happen faster. It might take longer. It may lead to a definitive agreement and affiliation. It may blow up. You know, maybe when we dig into the medical office building issue, you know, we're thinking this is a thirty million dollar project that will house twenty providers. Maybe we miscommunicated and they think it's a medical office tent. You know, so they will, you know, house three providers. So this could blow up. We don't think it will, but that is a possibility. And so we will spend some period of time, probably around six months plus or minus, working away on this. There will be a steering committee, a steering committee from Porter, a steering committee from UVM. And I'll be, as we better define that, I'll be communicating that. There'll be specific projects. EMR will be a project. Medical office building will be a project. Moving the providers over will be a project. There will be issues of governance. And the board will be dealing with those issues. So there will be project plans. This creates lots of work, but it's exciting work, it's important work. And then, you know, sometime next spring, we'll be communicating all through this process. It will become clear, I think, that yes, this is the road forward. Or you know what? We hit this stopping point, we can't get through this issue, we can't agree on that issue. At which point, we pursue a path of vigorous independence. So before I move on to the specifics, what kind of questions do people have on the general issues I just talked about? So in front of you is a one-page summary. And it says it's a summary of the letter of intent. Actually, it's a summary of what's called the term sheet. So this is a, the document that's being signed has two parts. One is the letter of intent. And it's a bunch of legal blah blah that says, we intend to dig deeper. And attached to it is a term sheet. And this is a summary of the bullet points in the term sheet. And the actual term sheet is probably three or four pages. And each one of these bullet points has about a paragraph. And some of these bullet points need a page and some of these bullet points need fifteen pages. So that's the work that needs to happen in the next six months is digging through these issues and any other issue we come across that, to clarify. So issue number one, employees. And I've talked about this in a number of forums, but I want to say it again. Our employees, if you are, you are employees at Porter Medical Center, you will stay employees at Porter Medical Center. Okay? So our employees stay our employees. There's something called an EIN, I don't know what that is, but it's an important thing. It's like a social security number for a business. So we stay a critical access hospital. You all stay our employees, except for me. Except for the providers. But everyone who's not a provider stays an employee at Porter. And you know, your benefits and wages stay the same as they would if we, as if we weren't affiliated. So in other words, they go up and down and get better and worse, just like they would if we're an independent organization. Exactly. Job security. You know, every time I see a report employees on this topic, I think if you're not feeling around this issue in general, a little frightened, you're probably not thinking about it hard enough. But if you're not feeling equal parts excitement, I would say you're probably not thinking about it enough either. You know, the job security issue, there's no 100% secure job in healthcare. There's no 100% secure job here if we pursue the path of independence. No job is 100% secure if we affiliate. I'm comfortable standing up here and saying, I wouldn't lose sleep over it. I think we're going to be okay. You know, as you look at other organizations nationally and in Vermont that have gone this pathway, layoffs have not been a big part of that. That's not where the efficiencies come from, that's not where the money comes from. Still going to need people to run lab tests, maintain our facilities, take x-rays, care for our patients. I think you can be comfortable that your job is secure. You know, best-case scenario, and what those of us who are involved in this process are hoping for, is a more robust Porter, a busier Porter, more patients, providing more services for our community. And that means job creation. So you know, I think the bottom line here, show up, work hard, provide great care for our patients. Let's make ourselves too great to fail. And I think that I'm comfortable saying, this is not going to have material impact on job security. Core services. So those are all the services that we do now. There's a list of them and I've circulated it previously. We've got inpatient care, outpatient care, long-term care. And we have agreed with UVM that these are services that are appropriate for a community hospital like Porter. And there has been no pushback from UVM. We haven't had to fight. In fact, we haven't even argued about any of our services. They have not said, oh, I don't know, you guys are going to keep doing inpatient care? That doesn't really make sense. They've said, that makes total sense. Surgical services, radiology, all the things we do now, they have basically said, well, yes, that's what a community hospital does. And yes, we don't have the capacity of UVM to do your community medicine. We can't care for our community, we have our community to care for. They want us to keep doing what we're doing. And as part of this agreement, there's what we call the five-year clause where there's an understanding that in the first five years, if we go forward, there won't be any material change in our core services without a mutual agreement between us. So it gives us that, that security for some period of time. It's really hard to predict what the needs will be for our community and the system, you know, more than five years down the road. Access. You know, we agree, again, the UVM Health Network really has two goals. It wants to care for their community, it's a big community, Chatham County. It's one of the few places in Vermont that's actually growing. So they have a big responsibility simply to care for their community. You know, their second goal is to provide the university-level, tertiary care level for a big swath of Vermont and New York State. So that keeps them pretty busy. So the notion that they want to come down here and steal our pneumonia, our congestive heart disease, our joint replacements, our appendicitis, our EDAR visits, our office visits, is laughable. They don't have the capacity, they don't have the interest. And in the sort of system we're looking to go to, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. We're all partners. You know, right now, if a patient gets their procedure here, we get the money. If it happens up in Burlington, they get the money. Once we're all part of the same family, it doesn't matter where they get it from a financial. So the financials are no longer a driver. And it's really about where can the procedure be done best? Where's the quality the highest? Where's the value the highest? And what makes the most sense for the patient? That's what's going to drive how and where we provide care going forward. It takes the competition out of play. EMR. This was a deal breaker for me. And you know, early in this process, I think it was in April, I talked to Dr. John Bromstad, he's now part of the UVM Health Network. And people know, we know that I'm not, being tough is not my strong suit. But I kind of puffed myself up. What I wanted to say to John was, it's epic or no deal, really. Because as a clinical person, that to me really is a deal breaker. It's epic or no deal. And so I said, John, it's epic or no deal. And he said, well, yeah, of course. A deal wouldn't make sense without it. That's what we do with our affiliates. That's what we're trying to build. Okay. Guess I showed him. Then I went on to medical office building, same thing, okay. Come on, bring it on. Medical office building, no deal. Yeah, no, of course. You've got four practices in town, they're scattered all over the place, you're paying lease payments. Patients are bouncing all around the, you know, the town. It doesn't make any sense, this is what we do with our partners. You know, we build these kinds of facilities. Okay, all right, got it? So I took him down on both those issues. Gave them the business. But you know, again, we need to dig in these details and this could explode. And we need timelines for Epic. And it's going to be a number of years. And we need to agree as two organizations, what is a reasonable timeline? There are a lot of steps that need to take place. The medical office building is the same thing. I'm quite sure that the Taj Mahal that I have in my mind is not exactly what they have in their mind. You know, I'm cautiously optimistic that their minds still come across. But yeah, there's going to be some giving and taking, it's going to be bumping and grinding. But that's what we need to spend the next six months doing. Quality, I've talked about a little bit. We have some wording within the term sheet that talks about all the different services that we can access as an affiliate. And actually, I'll be encouraging people to start accessing those services today. You know, we've been talking with them about a number of issues. We just haven't been able to move them forward, whether they're recruiting, you know, legal help, finance help. You know, they've rightfully been a little, you know, reluctant to dive in and offer all their services to someone that they're just dating. But with this level of commitment, I think more services will become available and we should start to access them and move things forward. Finance, we've talked about and people have been in presentations before, seen the financial modeling. You know, I guess the point I want to make is do not, we will have more cushion and think a better sense of financial security. But they're not going to drive down here with a carload of money. We still have to run the business. We really need to run the business with the thought in mind that maybe this, this won't work. Maybe six months from now, we'll learn that there are issues we didn't see coming. It will, but that's a possibility. And then we need to run the business for the foreseeable future. They will help us, we'll get better interest rates, we'll get better all-in-EMR. So there's significant financial benefits. But we need, still need to be fit stewards of the organization and continue to push to be more efficient. Governance. We keep our board, they have their board. We get one member from UVM on our board, it's going to be Dr. John Bromstad. And then we will have a member on their board. We will have members on their subcommittees. The CEO thing, who cares? You know, it'll be a joint, it'll be a shared responsibility. I mean, once we, if we go the road and we change over, I will have, you know, a reporting relationship to Dr. Bromstad. Mo will stay my number one most favorite best boss. But I'll have a broken-line relationship to Dr. Bromstad. Our chief financial officer, similarly, will report to me, but will also report to Kevin, their CFO. Dave will always be my boy. But he's going to have a relationship with their HR director. So those sorts of changes will take place. You know, that's good and bad. We are going to lose some autonomy, there's no question about it. You know, we're going to be part of the system. The good news is, we will no longer be an island. You know, in these positions, it's tough. Dave has some friends, colleagues throughout the state he can call when he has a tough issue. But at the end of the day, they're just friends and they're busy and they give him free advice and it's worth every penny of it. You know, now he's going to have someone, you know, who he can call where there's a real interest from that person's point of view that Dave gets it right. And that's going to be true for all of us. And I have to say, given the complexities of the world we live in and where healthcare is going, it's a bit of a relief to know that there's somebody out there who has, our success is very important to them. And they're willing to help us and work with us on top issues. Budget. This is really where the power, you know, and some of you may have heard me talk about this previously. You know, we've been an autonomous organization, we create our own budget with our managers and leadership. We run it through the board, we take the Green Mountain Care Board, boom, we're done. It doesn't mean extra step in that process. And that's the UVM board approving our budget. And you know, you can imagine, when you control the first strings, you have a lot of power. So that is an important piece of independence that we give up. You know, my sense from talking to colleagues across the state who have gone through this process and from talking to UVM, they're not interested in micromanaging what we do here. There will probably be budget targets. You know, you all need to create this sort of margin, two percent. You need to generate four days cash on hand and above and beyond that. Go for it. Send us a plausible budget, you know, something that you could present to the Green Mountain Care Board with a straight face. I think that's the level of oversight that we should expect, but that's still meaningful. And lastly, I put on here, employed physicians. The physician group, over a number of years, the plan is to move them over to employment with the UVM Medical Group. That's going to be a big project. You know, our goal is to do that without losing providers. Our goal is to do that with our providers being happy. So you know, I've been asked by the community, is that going to mean another major disruption with doctors leaving? Me having to get a new doctor? And my answer's been, well, no, we can't have that again. So it'll be a project that requires a fair bit of attention and discussion. But other places have done this, I think we'll be able to get it done. I'm totally going to, that's all I have to say.
So just as far as the providers becoming UVM. So if there's this shortage of providers down here, for instance, Millbury Pediatrics, they are down to one provider. Is there, will it work that they can come down and help fill in?
Yes. So you know, so, yes, it would have qualified, yes. So in terms of, I mean, one of the things we're really looking to get from this deal, and it gets back to access. You know, we have one ENT surgeon, Chris Anderson. You know, we have to bring in locums, it's expensive, it gives me some relief. You know, Amanda's short in ER, we've been short on a hospice program, two general surgeons. You know, having some bench depth there. There's no question that in an affiliated world, when we turn up shortages, our first call will be to UVM. Now, there's no guarantee that they'll always be able to meet our needs. But what I've heard, and mostly from central Vermont, is that they've been able to meet a lot of their needs, not all of their needs. You know, UVM, you know, general surgery, for instance, doesn't have five general surgeons sitting around tooling their thongs waiting for their next assignment. So I think there have to be realistic expectations on both sides. But in general, we're hoping that, or expecting that they will be able to provide us some bench depth, mostly for specialty care. My sense is that really primary care is our responsibility. And again, if we're really short in family physicians, we'll be able to call them and say, look, we're in a desperate situation, a real emergency, we need some help, can you help us? But I think the real focus is for their support will be around specialty care. And again, adding services, adding neurosurgery, neurology, things we don't have. Those are... And again, adding services, adding neurosurgery, neurology, things we don't have, those are issues we'd really like to grow.
So we heard all the stuff that they did for us.
Yes.
What, why, what is, you know, how, what's the other side of that?
What's the other side of it? What has people unhired? What have they created? No, I think, it's a great question, I get it, I get it, not infrequently. And I think anytime you're doing a deal, I think it's the right question to ask. What is their motivation? What are they getting? Are we giving up something we're not seeing, or we're giving up that we should know about? So here's what they're getting. First of all, if you look at their network, it looks like a big round cookie with a bite out of it. Okay? And where are the bites? You know, they serve about a million patients right now. So big round cookie, bite out of it, you know, and then specifically, you've got Ty over here, and they're not doing inpatient care anymore, they're not doing surgery anymore. So you've got a lot of patients over there that belong to the UVM Health Network who need community medical care services like we offer. They have to send them a plats burger to UVM now. There's some of that stuff that we can do, whether it's ER visits, inpatient visits, surgeries, that's good stuff for us. So number one, we fill out their network. And we've asked them, "Are you guys going to expand? Who's next?" And the short answer is probably not. We're probably the last piece of the puzzle for the foreseeable future. You know, number two, they really want an integrated system. They really, at first I thought maybe they just talk and talk, and I really think they believe this, that, you know, us, we share 50% of our patients right now, UVM and Porter. They want that care to be better. They want it to be better, more integrated, because it's just the right thing. But in the future, where we're paid for value, we're paid for outcomes, they're going to do better if the care of the patients between Porter and UVM is integrated. So we'll both do better, but they will do better. You know, the third thing I would say is payment reform, and it's a whole complicated topic, but the way that hospitals are being paid in the future is by how many people they have assigned to them. And so they're going to pick up, I don't know, 35,000 community members from our catchment area, and that'll be more money going to the whole VVM system. And then the last thing I would say is, and I'm biased, I'm Porter-centric and physician-centric, I'm also Middlebury-centric, you know, we have a little cash hang here. It's a good place. Anyone from Malone? All right, we're better than Malone. I mean, you know, it's, why, why do you all live here? It's a great place to live. You know, we have great facilities. I brought a couple of folks through our facility in the last few weeks, and our ORs are amazing. I don't know, most people probably haven't been in our two ORs, but they look like something out of a movie. They're like long, white, with lights and fancy machines and, you know, we have capacity. You know, our OB and her labor and deliveries is stunning. And so there's capacity there. So we have great facilities, we have good providers, we have the best staff, and we have, we have a good community. You know, reasonable socioeconomics, good services, mental health, elder care, you know, we're a community that can work together and work in a pain and perform world. We have Alex to run it all, you know, the coordination of services. So we're all, so I think that's what, you know, they're looking for. Fill out their system, get some more lives, provide integrated care, and then we're exceptional. Who would you want? Other questions? Yeah, Alex?
So going back to primary care, so I went to the Green Mountain Care Board hearing last night in Burlington, and then I was at the, your budget hearing, and Green Mountain Care Board cares a lot about access to primary care.
Yes.
What, what do you care for those providers? Like how, I, I, I can't.
I don't listen to the providers.
Yeah, I know, but I'm curious.
Turn that off.
Because everyone has got the same, I mean, there's so many people really concerned about whether or not the primary care providers are going to stay in Vermont.
So, you know, I guess, I don't think, I'm not sure, but I'm not, I don't think our providers, and I've had providers statewide, so Alex is on the cutting edge of payment reform and integrating services. And I think the providers in general have a sense that things are changing. This is complicated stuff, and I'm not sure that they, I don't really totally understand they all pay a waiver, and I'm going to the meeting next week in Ruppeland, and then another one in Manchester, so I can be running more. I don't think they really understand all the details. You know, I think, taking it back locally, you know, we lost a lot of providers, I'm going to say 10 primary care plus one minus, last fall, winter, into spring. You know, one of the big uncertainties this spring was, if we post it, will they come? In other words, when we go out recruiting for providers, will they come? And that was a question that was frightening to me, and the answers were unclear. Mrs. Peterson, who can recruit blood from a stone, a single-handedly, no, no, working with Suzanne, you know, the goodness has been, you know, I talked to providers who were planning to come here, right when I took my job, and they signed the contract, or in the works, and then there was all this disruption and turmoil. I talked to them, I told them exactly how I saw the world, that we've been through significant disruption, but it's still a great place to live, a great place to work, it's a great place to be a patient. And those folks decided to continue to come on. And since then, we've successfully recruited, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight providers. So the message I'm getting from that is that providers out there come to the Middlebury, and they visit Porter, and they meet you all, and they say, "Wow, this is a place I want to live, this is a place I want to work, this is a great place." And they continue to come here. So, kind of getting back to your question, I mean, payment reform is going to change things, but I think we're still going to be able to get providers, I'm cautiously optimistic we'll still get providers, but we're going to rebuild, but really, I told the community in Inkle, who take us 12 to 18 months to rebuild our primary care network, we're actually on a little bit ahead of schedule. I'm getting confident that we're going to be able to rebuild the same. And we've always been blessed with better-than-average, and correct me if I'm wrong, better-than-average primary care coverage within our community. I know if I say that to the community, someone jumps out of their seat, tells me, "I lost a doctor, you know, I can't get the doctor I want." But in terms of the number of providers for a small town in middle nowhere, we've been able to do really pretty well, based on Suzanne Peterson and the fact that it's just, you know, it's a great place to live, a great place to work, and, so, does that answer?
Yeah, yeah, and I think you hit on, and like when it comes to the numbers, both when you survey people out in the community and when you just look at the raw data, we definitely stand out as a top performer in access to primary care. It's just, it's scary to hear these stories, these individual stories of people talking about how Vermont's been a really hard place to be a provider, especially in some rural areas.
Yeah, and I talked to, you know, my counterparts at, you know, it's in all of Newport, St. Hansberry, Springfield, yeah, no, you know, they, yeah, it's, we've really been fortunate to have the physician network that we had in the rebuilding phase, but I'm starting to feel pretty confident that it's going to be good. Yes?
I'm very excited about the Epic.
Yes.
But there's no timeline.
Right. And I'm, so I'm going to, I tell you, you know who's going to really count their fist on the table on the timelines, will be the providers, because, you know, because they really want to make this change. You know, and we've had, again, this is an issue we need to dive into, and Rebecca, yeah, I mean, I think we're going to, you know, UVM is reluctant to come out and say, "We're going to install Epic on May 1st, 2019," because they don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. And this has been a point of contention at Central Vermont Hospital in Gary Montpelier, where they've been affiliated for five or six years now, and they're just getting ready to start moving forward with Epic. So they're, they're pretty frustrated over there. You know, what we're going to need to do, and I'll hand it over to Rebecca in a minute, but, you know, is sit together, get Rebecca's big brain working on this, along with her colleagues at UVM Health Network, and come up with a project plan that has, you know, it's going to take six months to do this piece of the project, and three months to do this piece, and six months for this, and, I don't know, identify the 10 or 12 really big steps, add up the months, and say, "This is where we think it'll end, but it could be off by this month to that much." And, I don't know, Rebecca, what do you think?
Yeah, it'll take about six months to evaluate. Earlier this week, Adam Buckley came down, if you saw, a man that was about seven feet tall and had a duck through the door, that is like knew half a boss, a lot of Fred, was really tall, which means I get to wear higher high heels than that stuff. So it'll take about six months to just evaluate what we have, the infrastructure, the internet speeds, and what it would take to go on to Epic Connect. And then it would be about 18 months for an install, if we got started right away. So I've been throwing out roughly to Fred, it would be more of like a go-live, if everything went smoothly, around 2019, 2020, for go-live.
I just have my heart open.
It's going to take, it's going to take a while, and that's, and that's also part of, if we end up on the CON that hasn't even been submitted yet with CBMC, we'd have to wait for that to be approved. And if not, then we need our own CON, and we have to go through that process. So if you realistically think about the approval of the CON, what it takes to just review the infrastructure, 18 months roughly for the whole, you know, system to be installed and set up, you know, late 2019-ish. I mean, it's almost 2017, right? So if you really think it out, it's really not that far.
So I wish, I wish I could.
I know these years are scaring you, but it's, I mean, it's not.
I just saw a sign that said EMR only, and in my brain.
That's what it says right on there.
Yeah, but I mean, in my brain, I was thinking billing everything.
Yeah, yeah.
So my heart's broke.
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, talking to Adam, the EHR up there is best of breed, it is broken, where we are centrally one system. So billing is different, HR is different, the lab system is completely different, it's not Epic, they're looking at going Epic, but the lab, Epic Lab is new, newer, and they're on, do you know what they're on?
Some questions.
Some class questions.
How does that work?
So he's looking at all of that, you know, and I'll be helping him look at all of that, it's interfaces.
So our billing would still be with what we have?
Oh, your billing would be, I'm predicting your billing would be with what they have, what they have up in Burlington, which is not Epic or not Meditech. You would be converting into something, something else.
IDEX.
IDEX.
Yeah, thank you. And so maybe that's better or not, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
So that, that would be a definite, we'd be going with that one versus staying with what we have and converting into the upgrade of one system?
Yeah, you don't, you don't know. Because as, as we're going and reviewing Epic and a lot of stuff here, UVM's also looking at upgrading a lot of stuff on their side, so we might coincide at the same time Epic Lab comes out, or Epic billing, or it's too unpredictable right now.
So basically, what you're saying is we're still, you know, we have Meditech and NPM and whatever issues we have here. If we go, when we go to Epic, we're still going to have Epic and this, and this, and this, to try and pull everything together.
Potentially.
So it's not, it's not going to be like, ooh, everything's the same.
Yeah.
People just need to be aware of that, especially the providers.
I don't think we really, I mean, we're probably ahead of ourselves in those sorts of details.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's going to be a negotiation, and from our side, you know, Rebecca and I and the rest of our steering committee are going to be pushing UVM as hard as we can to get solid dates and an aggressive timeline, fast as we can. And they're, they're going to push back and say, "Well, this is going to take this long, and that's going to take so long." And at the end of the day, we're going to come up with an agreement, hopefully, and it won't be as fast as we'd like, and it'll probably be fast enough that it creates some pressure up there, and that's okay. And, but we need to have a consistent message and set reasonable expectations on both sides, so that we don't get into this thing and everyone's disappointed. Yeah. Saw somebody, oh, yeah.
What does the nursing home stand with respect to those relationships?
So basically, a couple of things about Helen Porter. Number one, we threw it into the core service list, because it is a core service. You know, we are committed to maintaining long-term care and rehab in this community. The work that you all do over there is amazing, and you all care for the most vulnerable, frail, elderly folks, the folks who simply cannot get by at home. So we're committed to that. Other than that, there is no, there's really not much, I'm going to say there's no specific We did, actually, I take that back, we threw some wording in there about, "They will help us sort through the financials of Helen Porter," which have been a challenge recently. The UVM Health Network currently owns five long-term care facilities, and if you think about it, they used to own half of one, say, you know, six or seven years ago, and they've gone through this big expansion, and a number of the places they've affiliated with have long-term care facilities, Central Vermont, E-Town, another one of the upstate New York places. So all of a sudden, they've got six of these facilities, meaning, I don't know, five hundred beds. So they are going through their analysis of what do they need, and how do we run all these things? Because they don't have a lot of expertise and experience. And we're going to be working with them, talking about how we make Helen Porter as good as it can be and sustainable, but there's no, nothing, nothing more specific than that. It's core service, we're keeping it, the community, we're hoping that we'll be able to give some help.
Other than the nurses' union, are there other unionized groups up at UVM that would require us to become part of a union?
So I'm going to say, Dave, you want to take that one?
Sure. So they do have other groups that are unionized, but that won't have an impact on Porter due to any affiliation. So the Nurses' Union...